The House will come to order. Prayer by the Chaplain.
Thank you. I come before you, O God, to thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here this morning. I come before you for life itself, for the measure of help we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship, for peace and justice, for community and community involvement. I come before you in these tumultuous days in which we live and for the long journey ahead. I stand to ask you to guide our leaders in their important deliberations today so that they will be able to shape the kinds of decisions that will foster justice in the places and in the circumstances where justice has been denied. I also come before you, O God, to ask you to grant our legislators wisdom and compassion to serve our people in the best interest of all humankind. I come to ask you to open their ears as well as their hearts and fill their minds to enable them to do and say what must be said and done that will help the people of Minnesota to live the good life and believe that they too can work side by side to make a difference that will be seen and known around the world. I come to beg you, O God, to bless our leaders and keep them always in your thoughts. Give them strength when they are weak. Give them knowledge when they are unsure. Give them courage to continue to fight for harmony and give them the ability to do wondrous things that will remind us of your everlasting love, a love that will show us that even in our darkest hour, the light of hope continues to shine and bring amid conflicting interests and issues of our time the good news everywhere, that positive change is on the way. And finally, I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved state of Minnesota. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chaplain for today is Reverend Oliver White from Clark Grace United Church of Christ, South St. Paul, Minnesota. Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Clerk will take the role. Please state your name and your location slowly, loudly, and clearly.
Acem.
Acem, St. Paul, present.
Acem, St. Paul, present. Albright. Albright, St. Paul, present. Anderson.
Anderson, Barsoness Township, present.
Anderson, Barsoness Township, present. Becker.
I'm Becker, Browns Valley, present.
Becker, Browns Valley, present. Bonner.
Bonner, St. Paul, present.
Bonner, St. Paul, present. Barr.
Barr, East Bethel, present.
Barr, East Bethel, present. Baker.
Baker, Wilmer, present.
Baker, Wilmer, present. Becker Finn. Becker Finn, St. Paul, present. Bennett, excused. Bernardi.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present.
Bernardi, St. Paul, present. Bierman.
Bierman, St. Paul, present.
Bierman, St. Paul, present. Bowe.
Bowe, St. Paul, present.
Bowe, St. Paul, present. Brand. Brand. Cantrell.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present.
Cantrell, St. Paul, present. Carlson A.
Carlson A, St. Paul, present.
Carlson A, St. Paul, present. Carlson L.
Carlson L, Crystal, present.
Carlson L, Crystal, present. Christianson.
Christianson, St. Paul, present.
Christianson, St. Paul, present. Claflin.
Claflin, St. Paul, present.
Claflin, St. Paul, present. Considine.
Considine, Mancato, present.
Considine, Mancato, present. Daniels.
Daniels, Fairboat, present.
Daniels, Fairboat, present. Dowd. Dowd, St. Paul, present. Davids.
David Preston, present.
Davids, Preston, present. Dafne. Dafne, St. Paul, present. Dean.
Dean, St. Paul, present.
Dean, St. Paul, present. Dameth.
Dameth, St. Paul, present.
Dameth, St. Paul, present. Detmer.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present.
Detmer, Forest Lake, present. Draskowski. Draskowski. Eklund.
Eklund, St. Paul, present.
Eklund, St. Paul, present. Edelson.
Edelson, Edina, present.
Edelson, Edina, present. Elkins.
Elkin, St. Paul, present.
Elkin, St. Paul, present. Ericsson.
Ericsson, St. Paul, present.
Ericsson, St. Paul, present. Fabian. Fabian, St. Paul, present. Fisher.
Fisher, St. Paul, present.
Fisher, St. Paul, present. Franzen.
Franzen, Alexandria Township, present.
Franzen, Alexandria Township, present. Freiberg.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present.
Freiberg, St. Paul, present. Garofalo.
Garofalo, Farmington, present.
Garofalo, Farmington, present. Gomez.
Gomez, St. Paul, present.
Gomez, St. Paul, present. Green.
Green, Monoman County, present.
Green, Monoman County, present. Gressel.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present.
Gressel, Clearbrook, present. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present.
Grunhagen, Glencoe, present. Gunther.
Gunther, Fairmount, present.
Gunther, Fairmount, present. Haley.
Haley, Redwing, present.
Haley, Redwing, present. Halverson. Halverson, St. Paul, present. Hamilton.
Hamilton, St. Paul, present.
Hamilton, St. Paul, present. Hanson.
Hanson, St. Paul, present.
Hanson, St. Paul, present. Hassan.
Hassan, Minneapolis, present.
Hassan, Minneapolis, present. Hausmann.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present.
Hausmann, St. Paul, present. Heinrich.
Heinrich, Anoka, present.
Heinrich, Anoka, present. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present.
Heinzmann, Nisswa, present. Herr. Herr, St. Paul, present. Hurtas.
Hurtas, Wayzetta, present.
Hurtas, Wayzetta, present. Hornstein.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present.
Hornstein, Minneapolis, present. Howard.
Howard, St. Paul, present.
Howard, St. Paul, present. Hewitt.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present.
Hewitt, St. Paul, present. Johnson. Johnson, St. Paul, present. Jordan.
Jordan, St. Paul, present.
Jordan, St. Paul, present. Juergens.
Juergens, Cottage Grove, present.
Juergens, Cottage Grove, present. Keel.
Keel, Hammond Township, present.
Keel, Hammond Township, present. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present.
Cleavorn, St. Paul, present. Cagle.
Cagle, St. Paul, present.
Cagle, St. Paul, present. Katisa Watoon.
Katisa Watoon, St. Paul, present.
Katisa Watoon, St. Paul, present. Koznick. Koznick. Creshaw.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present.
Creshaw, Little Falls, present. Kunisch Paudin.
Kunisch Paudin, New Brighton, present.
Kunisch Paudin, New Brighton, present. Lehman.
Lehman, Cohasset, present.
Lehman, Cohasset, present. Lee. Lee, St. Paul, present. Lesch.
Lesch, St. Paul, present.
Lesch, St. Paul, present. Liebling.
Liebling, Rochester, present.
Liebling, Rochester, present. Lean. Lean. Lilly.
Lilly, St. Paul, present.
Lilly, St. Paul, present. Lippert.
Lippert, Northfield, present.
Lippert, Northfield, present. Listlegard. Listlegard, St. Paul, present. Long. Long, St. Paul, present. Lucero.
Lucero, Dayton, present.
Lucero, Dayton, present. Luick. Luick, St. Paul, present. Mahoney. Mahoney, St. Paul, present. Mann. Mann.
Mann, St. Paul, present.
Mann, St. Paul, present. Mariani.
Mariani, St. Paul, present.
Mariani, St. Paul, present. Markwart. Markwart, St. Paul, present. Mason.
Mason, St. Paul, present.
Mason, St. Paul, present. McDonald. McDonald. Mecklen.
Mecklen, Clear Lake, present.
Mecklen, Clear Lake, present. Miller.
Miller, St. Paul, present.
Miller, St. Paul, present. Moeller.
Moeller, St. Paul, present.
Moeller, St. Paul, present. Moran.
Moran, St. Paul, present.
Moran, St. Paul, present. Morrison.
Morrison, St. Paul, present.
Morrison, St. Paul, present. Munson.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present.
Munson, Lincoln Township, present. Murphy.
Murphy, St. Paul, present.
Murphy, St. Paul, present. Nash, excused. Nelson M.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present.
Nelson M, St. Paul, present. Nelson N.
Nelson N, Clover Township, present.
Nelson N, Clover Township, present. New. New, St. Paul, present. Noor. Noor, St. Paul, present. Nornis.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present.
Nornis, Fergus Falls, present. Navatney.
Navatney, Elk River, present.
Navatney, Elk River, present. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present.
O'Driscoll, Sartell, present. Olson. Olson, St. Paul, present. O'Neil.
O'Neil, Maple Lake, present.
O'Neil, Maple Lake, present. Palowski.
Palowski, Eden Prairie, present.
Palowski, Eden Prairie, present. Purcell.
Purcell, St. Paul, present.
Purcell, St. Paul, present. Petersburg.
Petersburg, Wasika, present.
Petersburg, Wasika, present. Pearson.
Pearson, Rochester Township, present.
Pearson, Rochester Township, present. Pinto.
St. Pinto, St. Paul, present.
Pinto, St. Paul, present. Poppy.
Poppy, St. Paul, present.
Poppy, St. Paul, present. Poston.
Poston, Lakeshore, present.
Poston, Lakeshore, present. Pryor.
Pryor, St. Paul, present.
Pryor, St. Paul, present. Quam.
Quam, Byron, present.
Quam, Byron, present. Richardson.
Richardson, St. Paul, present.
Richardson, St. Paul, present. Robbins.
Robbins, Maple Grove, present.
Robbins, Maple Grove, present. Runbeck.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present.
Runbeck, Circle Pines, present. Sandell.
Sandell, St. Paul, present.
Sandell, St. Paul, present. Sandstedt.
Sandstedt, Hibbing, present.
Sandstedt, Hibbing, present. Sauk.
Sauk, Rochester, present.
Sauk, Rochester, present. Schumacher.
Schumacher, Laverne, present.
Schumacher, Laverne, present. Schultz. Schultz, St. Paul, present. Scott.
Scott, Andover, present.
Scott, Andover, present. Stevenson.
Stevenson, St. Paul, present.
Stevenson, St. Paul, present. Sundine.
Sundine, St. Paul, present.
Sundine, St. Paul, present. Swazinski.
Swazinski, Northern Township, present.
Swazinski, Northern Township, present. Tabkey.
Tabkey, St. Paul, present.
Tabkey, St. Paul, present. Tice.
Tice, St. Cloud, present.
Tice, St. Cloud, present. Torkelson.
Torkelson, Hanska, present.
Torkelson, Hanska, present. Erdahl.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present.
Erdahl, Acton Township, present. Vang.
Vang, St. Paul, present.
Vang, St. Paul, present. Vogel.
Vogel, Elko, Newmarket, present.
Vogel, Elko, Newmarket, present. Wagenius.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present.
Wagenius, Solem Township, present. Waslowick.
Waslowick, St. Paul, present.
Waslowick, St. Paul, present. West.
West, Blaine, present.
West, Blaine, present. Winkler. Winkler, St. Paul, present. Wogomat.
Wogomat, St. Paul, present.
Wogomat, St. Paul, present. Zhang J.
Zhang J, St. Paul, present.
Zhang J, St. Paul, present. Zhang T.
Zhang T, St. Paul, present.
Zhang T, St. Paul, present. Yuakim.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present.
Yuakim, St. Paul, present. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, St. Paul, present. Brand.
Brand, St. Paul, present.
Brand, St. Paul, present. Koznick. Koznick.
Co- Koznick, Lakeville, present.
Koznick, Lakeville, present. Lean.
Present. Lean, Moorhead, present.
Lean, Moorhead, present. McDonald. McDonald. Draskowski. Draskowski, St. Paul, present.
Agwarum is present. The Clerk will read the Journal of the preceding day.
Journal of the House Special Session 2020, Fifth Day, St. Paul, Minnesota, Thursday, June 18th, 2020.
If there's no objection, further reading of the Journal will be dispensed with and the Journal will be approved as corrected by the Chief Clerk. Hearing no objection, the Journal is approved as corrected by the Chief Clerk. Introduction and First Reading of House Files. The following House files have been offered for introduction today. The Chief Clerk will report the House files and give them their first reading.
Introduction and First Reading of House Files 157 through 170.
First reading, House Files 157 through 170. Calendar for the day. The first bill on the calendar for the day is Senate File 47. The Clerk will report the bill.
Senate File Number 47, Number One on the calendar for the day, an act relating to local government aid, the unofficial engrossment.
I recognize the author of the bill, the member from... Which county? Help me out. Clay. Representative Markwart to explain the bill.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and members. The COVID-19 pandemic has imposed some huge social and economic costs on our nation and on the state of Minnesota in terms of our deaths, the services provided, and the impacts on people in our local communities. And this bill provides a very important and needed funding to provide for those services but also provide for those who are impacted by this COVID-19 pandemic. And there is no doubt that what is in this bill will make our local communities, will make our state better, stronger, healthier, and safer. And it's because it's the people in these communities that make the difference. And so Senate File 47 is going to provide for those people who provide those services in our local communities and who are impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And we're talking about our nurses, our law enforcement, our firefighters and our first responders, our veterans, our personal care attendants, our childcare providers, our small businesses, young families to senior citizens, all those who are either providing important services as we fight the COVID-19 pandemic or are impacted by this pandemic. And so this bill helps our local communities provide that funding. It helps people get through the COVID-19. So let me take you through the bill. So the first part I want to talk about is the dollars, the CARES funding, the $841 million that goes out to our local communities. And I really want to thank Representative Garofalo, Senator Chair Rosen, Senator Dietzke for their work on this part of the bill in laying out how we're going to get those, that $841 million, out to our communities. And just as a little background of where we're at with this, and I know there was some discussion on the House floor the other day, so some of this bill we already know. But through the CARES Act, which was passed on March 27th of this year, it was $150 billion that the federal government sent out to our states and local governments. And Minnesota got about $2.2 billion. And in that federal law, they said that any local unit of government that had population of 500,000 or more would get a direct appropriation from the U.S. Department of Treasury. We have just two local units of government in Minnesota that meet that qualification, and that is Hennepin County and Ramsey County. So they were given a direct appropriation of $317 million. Didn't go through the state. It went straight from the U.S. Department of Treasury to those counties and those were received in April. So that left about $1.7 billion. And 45% of that, which was kind of some guidance, it's not required, but guidance, equals $841 million. So that's how we're getting to the $841 million needed funding that will go out to our counties, our cities, and our townships. So how does that work? First of all, it is split up, 55% to our counties and 45% to our cities and townships. And so it is sent out on a per capita basis. And so our counties, all 85 counties, because Hennepin and Ramsey have the direct appropriations. So the other 85 counties are going to get roughly $121 per capita. And if you look at the runs that are out there, that's what that equals. Also, the cities would receive $75 per capita, any city 200 in population or more. And townships would receive $25 per capita, 200 population or more. But if you are a township of 5,000 population or more, you get the city per capita expense at, or distribution of $75 per capita. If you are a city or a township under 200, you apply through your county. So regardless of your population, if you have COVID-19 expenses, you will get funding for that. The county has to provide that. So if you look at the dollars that each county is getting, besides the $121 per capita, they also get extra money to cover for those cities and townships under 200 that are in their counties. One really important part in this part of the bill is that of the county share, 10%, 10% has to be set aside for economic support or emergency individual assistance. So that's going to total about $47 million. And that is the realization that not only do we have health concerns and health expenses, but we also have small businesses and individuals that have some real economic struggles because of COVID-19. So this would allow counties to customize an approach, to be able to look in their counties and say, hey, we understand these businesses were hit the hardest or these individuals were hit the hardest. And they can set up their own economic plan that is unique to their counties. And I think that is really, really important because we know there are economic hits for both small businesses and individuals. The dollars in the bill would get out on June 30th. It's important that we get those dollars out soon. It also allows local communities to collaborate with one another. In addition to the $841 million, there is also added on in this bill, another $30 million that could be used in a second round for more need-based money that would go out if there's hotspots that develop or there are unanticipated expenses. So the total amount of the funding that would go out to our local units of government, our counties, our cities, and our townships would actually be about $871 million. So those are the details on that part of the bill. So to enhance, as I said in the outset, that while we have people providing services, we also have people that are impacted, that are hit by COVID-19 and that play a huge part in our communities. And if we can help them out in this time, it's going to make our communities healthier and stronger and safer. So let me talk about some of that funding that is also in the bill. So there's $21 million for our personal care attendants. And these are people who help individuals with disabilities or mental illnesses be able to live independently in their homes. You have talked to these personal care attendants who work very hard. We pay them for their mind and their work, but these personal care attendants throw their hearts in for free. That's what they do. And they have a huge impact in our community. This would provide 21, 15% increase one time because of the work they're doing during this COVID-19 pandemic, which is very, very important. Also, as part of this, that parents and spouses of people that they are caring for, that are under PCA right now expenditures, they would now qualify to receive reimbursement for caring for their loved ones, which is very, very important. Another area where this funding goes out to is $4 million in this biennium to our veterans. Now, our veterans might not have been on the front lines during the COVID-19 fight, but we know they have been on the front lines and fighting for our freedoms and our liberties throughout. And this is some very, very important funding that would go towards preventing homelessness. Not one single veteran should be homeless in this state of Minnesota. It also would look at preventing suicides. $4 million this year for our veterans. Childcare providers. Childcare providers. It increases the Child Care Assistance Program rates to meet 30% or 30 percentile of the most recent childcare survey rates. Also, it will help keep us, getting us into federal compliance, because if we don't, we could lose 5% of our federal funding, which would be about $6 million. So it's important, you have heard from your childcare providers during the COVID-19 pandemic, and we know around the state, that's a huge shortage. And so it's very important we can provide some important funding there. $38 million is going to go out to direct care and treatment services, serving people with mental illnesses, developmental disabilities, chemical dependency. There is a one-time $500 COVID-19 payment to about 28,000 families on Minnesota Family Investment Program. That is going to really help our young families get through this COVID-19 pandemic. There is a total between the Trunk Highway Fund and the General Fund, about $9 million this year for our State Patrol, for training, for their work, of course, during the COVID-19. There's also some funding that dealt with the federal government and overpayments. So there is $29 million that would go to the Leech Lake Band of Ojibwe and the White Earth Band of Ojibwe, that if the federal government requires them to pay back some dollars, it's not a sure thing, but if they do, the state would provide that funding. There's also about $9 million rounding up for an overpayment on mental disease that went to counties. And the state now would pick that $9 million up, and the counties would not have to do that. There's also $4 million for, that would go to the BCA for sexual assault, exam kits, testing, and storage. Corrections, about $19 million would go for correction officers, who we know also are on the front lines during this pandemic. There are also a few things in the bill that are things that have been agreed on or non-controversial. The DNR Lands Bill is also in there. So members, this bill helps our state's local governments cover the huge costs of providing services for the COVID-19 pandemic, and also provides funding for those people that are struggling. So these are dollars that are going out to, again, our nurses, our law enforcement, firefighters, first responders, our veterans, personal care attendants, childcare providers, small businesses, young families, to senior citizens. And finally, in this biennium, because in Article III of the bill, there are transfers from the General Fund to the CARES funding of about $148 million. So the net impact on the General Fund in this biennium is actually a savings to the state of about $7 million. So, Madam Speaker and members, open for amendments and discussion on the bill.
There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Moran moves to amend NFL number 47. The unofficial engrossment is follows. The amendment is coded A11.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Moran, to your amendment.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and members. Members, this is a good amendment. The main purpose of this amendment in this bill is to bring Minnesota foster care licensing standards more in line with our adoption standards. Under current law, our foster care licensing standards and processes created many more barriers for individuals, including relatives, than our adoption standards. This inconsistency creates problems for patients' children in permanent safe homes, and it isn't good for family preservation. This bill will also bring Minnesota in line with current federal policy and recommendations related to foster care licensing and background checks. It is time for Minnesota to rethink the way we license foster care providers. Unlike other providers requiring a DHS license, family foster homes are not a business. They should be a safe haven for children who can't live at home. For communities of color, the statutory barriers in our current foster care licensing statute has a greater impact. This law will help remedy that disparity. When children can remain with relatives in foster care and stay connected to their families, they have a better long-term outcome, including higher high school graduation rates, decreased rates, decreased risk of mental health disorders, and less overall trauma. Members, COVID-19 has made family visitation for children within the child welfare system difficult. Increasing access for relatives to obtain foster care licenses during this time will make it easier for children to both remain with families but also see family more often and consistently while they are in the system and out of their homes. This is a great deal that is supported by the Minnesota Association of County Social Service Administration, the County Attorney Association, several private adoption agencies, Hennepin County, the NWACP of Minnesota, several tribes, and the Indian Child Welfare Center, Aspire Minnesota, and so many constituents across a breadth of experiences and perspectives. And it provides a well-thought-out and negotiated balance to ensure both safety for children but also a more reasonable list of barriers that doesn't exclude many wonderful foster care providers who have an imperfect past. Madam Speaker, member, this amendment is a drop in the bucket. The cost is very minimum. And for fall 2021, the cost is 100K, but 1/3 is paid by the federal government that brings it down to 68K. And then in 2022 and 2023, it's 78K. This is really a bucket to really create a process in a place where kids can be safe and loved. So I hope I can get the member's support on this amendment, and I stand for questions.
The member from Morrison, Representative Creesha.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I rise and speak in favor of the Moran amendment. I'm actually on the original bill and wholeheartedly support these efforts. Representative Moran is absolutely correct. This is a drop in the bucket, and it doesn't go far enough. And Representative Moran, I want to thank you for bringing that up, and I hope members can support this. I would be remiss if I didn't thank a couple people. I would like to thank the governor and the DFL leadership for bringing Washington-style politics into play here and preventing this from actually probably becoming law. Because by breaking the agreement, we can't be doing good work that Representative Moran is doing. And in fact, we're just sticking it on to agreements that have been broken. So Representative Moran, let's pass your amendment. Let's find a way to get this done in better times and when politics aren't in play, because this piece you're doing here can move the needle on families more than anything else we can do. But we're in a fortunate situation where the Washington-style politics have gotten in the way, which is truly unfortunate. But please support this amendment, and members, let's keep working on this issue and supporting Moran and her efforts.
The member from Shisago, Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Would Majority Leader Winkler yield for a question, please?
He will yield. Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Majority Leader Winkler. I'm looking at the bill, I'm looking at the amendment, and I'm wondering if you can point me to the section of the bill that deals with Minnesota Statute Section 245A. Based on our discussions last night, I'm sure that it must be in there, but I'm not seeing that specific language. I assume I'm just missing that.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, Representative New, I'm pretty sure that points of order from yesterday's floor session are not the subject of debate today, but I do think that there is an appropriation in the bill that is contingent on this language. And so using that appropriation placeholder that went in in Ways and Means allows us to amend this on.
Representative New.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify. So indeed, because the subject matter is in the bill, it is indeed germane. It doesn't need the actual section of statute. Thank you, Majority Leader Winkler.
Parliamentary inquiry, Madam Speaker.
Representative Winkler.
Madam Speaker, are the rules and the determinations of the presiding officer governed in any way by statements on the floor from members about what they think happened?
The speaker doesn't engage in debate. Any further discussion to the Moran amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails. The amendment is adopted. Discussion to the bill. The member from Rice, Representative Lippert.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. We need to make sure that people with disabilities and older adults can access the care that they need. We need to make sure that those who are caring for people with disabilities and older adults so that they can survive from day to day are valued for that work. There was a shortage of personal care assistance before COVID-19 because of low wages and poor benefits, and there's an even greater shortage now. This shortage is leading to a growing feeling of panic among people with disabilities who rely on this care. For a town hall recently, I had a conversation with a person with disabilities named Lauren about what it is like to try to find care right now. She was only available for a short portion of the town hall, because she only has one PCA available to her right now, and her PCA is only available a few days a week. I asked Lauren what happens when she isn't able to access the care that she needs. She said, I don't mind being frank with you. And then she talked about not being able to get the transfer she needs. She explained that currently she lives with her mom. Because of the shortage of care, it's hard for her mom to balance work and caring for her daughter. She said that her mom helps her but can't do all of her cares, and her mom's husband isn't always available. So this means that sometimes she soaks the bed. Sometimes she goes four to five days without a shower simply because she can't access needed care. She said, for me, PCA work is literally life-saving. The people who help me survive day to day are the PCAs. The provisions in this bill provide a temporary rate increase for PCA agencies, and at least 80% of those funds must go to wages. It is increased wages that will stabilize the PCA workforce, help us recruit more PCAs, and support people with disabilities and older adults through this crisis. Providing compensation to family members who currently provide essential care for their loved ones will help them make ends meet as they have to balance work and caring for their loved ones, too. The work of the PCA is hard work. It's extremely important work. And since many of our PCAs are women of color, this is one more way for us to be addressing racial equity in Minnesota, too. Providing greater economic security for PCAs is the pathway to ensuring that people with disabilities and seniors can access the care they need and live with dignity. So I thank members for their support for this bill today.
The member from Dakota, Representative Hewitt.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. I come here today to support this bill, as we were able to find the funds much needed for the Minnesota Zoo. As all of you know, the Minnesota Zoo has been around since the late, mid-'70s. I remember my first visit there, and just totally in awe. When I took this position here in the House, I went out and sat at the zoo for a day and looked at who's using the zoo, and how the zoo affects so many lives. It affects our moms and our dads that go out there daily just to take their kids on a stroller with strollers. I've seen a lot of senior citizens that I talk to from all over the state, and all over the metro area, and from outstate. I've seen a homeschool mom that I talk to and ask her how she's teaching her classroom at the zoo. Our zoo is definitely an asset, and we need to take care of it. I know many members say that I didn't make the decision on the zoo, but we inherited this, and we need to protect it. Unfortunately, this year, the zoo ran into a major stumbling block during the COVID crisis. By no fault of their own, they had to close, not only for the safety of the public, but also for the safety of the animals and the assets that Minnesota owns out there. The zoo actually ran into a terrible situation, because this was also during some of their busiest times, when loads of school buses come in, and many of their events, they lost Memorial Day, which was a big gate event. The gate actually brings in 2/3 of the zoo's operation budget. Without that money, they just could not continue to function right now. The zoo has asked us for a $6 million stipend to get back on their feet. There's also a lot of rumors out there saying that if the zoo just can get it open, they'll fix this problem. I had a long talk with the director out there about this, and there is no way of just opening the zoo even to full capacity, that they will be able to fix this problem just with their attendance. By the way, the zoo is going to open today, the drive-through, and the zoo staff, and I have to thank them for this, have a robust plan to open the zoo full down the line. Members, I thank you for this time, and Madam Speaker, I ask for passage of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members, one of the first things that my father taught me when I graduated from high school before I got my first job, is he sat me down over breakfast, and he talked about first things when you go into business, or when you have a relationship, a business relationship, or a commitment to another entity or another individual. And he identified 10 things that if I charged myself with the following throughout the course of my career, whether in business or any other walk in life, he said I would always be able to hold my head high and say that I kept my word. Senate File 47, the unofficial engrossment, is a break of someone's word. There were four individuals that were tasked with the opportunity and the responsibility of arriving at a means of providing 85 counties with an appropriation that came to us from the federal government. And they did that. That is included in Article I of this bill. Several days ago, it became known to us that it wasn't good enough for somebody, and they wanted it changed. That's why you see Articles II, III, and IV. I serve as the minority lead on state government finance, and I've had the distinct pleasure of working alongside Chair Michael Nelson. And several weeks ago, we also took up a very contentious issue on the elections bill. And we were tasked with arriving at a consensus and understanding strongly bipartisan that could provide this state with an opportunity to have integrity, continuity, and an understanding and certainty about our elections. Now, that came at a price to Chair Nelson, because on a number of occasions, he had to take some pretty hard votes to defend the understanding and the commitment that we had all made to one another, to how that bill was to move forward. And I tip my hat to him for keeping his word. I can't say the same about this bill.
Representative Albright, I'm just going to remind you not to arraign the motives or discuss personalities. Keep to the substance of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. A deal is a deal. And what this bill in front of us represents is a break in the agreement and the covenant made between four people tasked with arriving at a deal that would provide immediate economic relief under the COVID-19 Act to 85 counties. I find it unfortunate that there had been provisions added that were not part of that agreement, and for that, I wish that, whether it would be in a supplemental budget or individual bills, that they would have been brought forward. Because candidly, for the measures that have been put into this, if they were included in other bills, or struck as an understanding between the other three members or four members of this task force, I think you would have found strong bipartisan support. But the deal that was struck did not include those. I find it very unfortunate that the word that we all carry as a bond around here, it's our only currency.
Representative Albright, please talk about the substance of the bill. You are arraigning motives of members.
Madam Speaker, this bill is not what was agreed to. I cannot support it. Thank you.
There's an amendment at the desk. The clerk will report the amendment.
Pinto moves to amend NFL number 47. The unofficial engrossment is amended. The amendment is coded A20-0810.
A correction, I believe this amendment will be offered by Representative Franzen. The member from... The member from Douglas, Representative Franzen.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. Yes, so I am introducing the amendments here on the Child Care Assistance Funds. Members, um, it is very important that we are cautious with our taxpayer dollars. And for years, the last many years, we've been discussing raising the C cap rates with the acknowledgement that we were reaching the timeline when we would be out of compliance with the federal government. However, during those conversations of the past few years, the Child Care Assistance Program has been under investigation for child care assistance fraud. But, um, so I guess we will continue to discuss this amendment. Thank you.
The member from Ramsey, Representative Pinto.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and, uh, and thank you, Representative Franzen, for bringing this amendment forward. Members, Chair Markwart made reference to, uh, to an increase in Child Care Assistance Program rates that is contained in the bill. This is an issue that is of huge concern to families and communities in every one of our districts. And the federal government has, has set a requirement that rates be set based on a survey that's conducted every three years and that there, that the, the rates be aimed at the 75th percentile of that survey, but that there's a minimum of at least be set at the 25th percentile. Our state is far, far below that. We are one of only a couple states that is out of compliance for those requirements, requirements imposed by the Trump administration. I should, I should note that if we fail to meet them, then there's a penalty we have to pay of several million dollars, as was described by Chair Markwart, like as much as 5 million. The language in the amendment offered by Representative Franzen reflects an agreement with the, with the other body, but it's one that I would hope that, that everyone in our chamber could agree to. It provides for an increase in rates, but without any general fund spending. It's entirely with federal dollars that are specifically designated for this precise purpose. There's been money that's been building up in those federal dollars that is dedicated to this purpose and yet not being put to that use. And what this would do is allow that money to be put to use, allow it to support families and providers and communities, allows to avoid having to write a check to the federal government for the penalty, as I described. And it's, and as I say that it does so without the use of general fund dollars and would hope that, that everyone could agree with that. And I, I do want to thank Representative Franzen for her very hard work and her championing this, in this area. And I'm excited to be able to make progress here. And so I certainly would urge members to support the Franzen amendment.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say no. The motion prevails, the amendment is adopted. There are no further amendments at the desk. The clerk will give the bill. It's third reading.
Third reading, Senate File Number 47, as amended.
Third reading as amended. Discussion to the bill. The member from Hennepin, Representative Long.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Very much appreciate this bill coming forward today. There's been a lot of hard work to help out our communities across the state. The community that I represent, Minneapolis, has been one of the hardest hit in the state for COVID cases. We have 4,096 COVID cases. And Minneapolis, like some other cities, has its own public health department and in many ways operates more similar to a county than it does to a city. We have 22 contact tracers that the city has hired to try to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 in Minneapolis. And the city anticipates that it's going to incur about $50 million of costs this year alone, just on COVID expenses, trying to help deal with the crisis. So this money is urgently needed. But I also want to speak in particular to the $30 million Need-Based Fund that was added into this bill. This is extremely important for communities across our state. We know what the state looks like right now with COVID-19, but we don't know where the next hotspot might be. And the underlying $841 million, while it gets out a significant amount of money to communities around the state, does not deal with hotspots and is not based on need. So including this $3 million of need-based funding is extremely important. Just to take one example, Nobles County was recently reported to be the fourth-largest COVID cases per capita in the country for a county. They have 1,600 cases in, in Nobles County that they are dealing with. Under the base funding, though, they're, they get the same amount of funding as Wabashaw County, which has 21 cases. So there's a 77 times higher rate in Nobles County than Wabashaw County. This $30 million fund would allow Nobles County to apply for additional funding to help deal with their hotspot. We've also seen places like Mauer County that Representative Poppy represents with Hormel and the quality of pork producers beginning to see more COVID cases popping up there. They now have 733 cases in Mauer County, making them one of the top 10 in the entire state. And there's a concern that those cases may grow. So this hotspot funding is extremely important to allow for communities that are not recognized for their disproportionate impact right now under the $841 million spending. And I just want to thank Chair Markwart for his work in supporting this provision. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Dakota, Representative Garofalo.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. First of all, let me begin by thanking Representative Markwart. Representative Markwart was good to work with you on the provisions in the CARES Act. You, Senator Dietzick, Senator Rosen, and I were tasked with the responsibilities of achieving agreement on that. And there were some compromises and some, some things we didn't like, but at the end of the day, that's what the art of compromise is. And we were tasked with that responsibility to reach an agreement, and we did. We somehow managed to get the League of Minnesota Cities, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, the Association of Minnesota Counties, all on board and supporting our plan. And, you know, one of the, one of the trade-offs we made in there is that, under this, under this bill, under the provisions of this, Hennepin and Ramsey County are getting substantially more money per capita than other counties. And so that was a, that was a compromise we made, but one of the things that happens. So I support that section of the bill, and it's one that has strong bipartisan support. That language passed the Senate by a vote of 62 to 4. But rather than focus on the other sections of the bill that I have disagreements with, I will just tell members that, you know, a couple of days ago, I think we achieved what I call peak venom. And what peak venom is, that's the point in a session or legislative session where there is the most conflict and the most controversy. And I think that happened two days ago. And the sense I'm getting from leadership of all four caucuses and the governor is that there's a greater focus on reaching an agreement now. And we want to, less of a focus on arguing and more of a focus on agreeing. And in light of that, as well as the fact that today is an important holiday in our, our nation's history, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wipe the slate clean and just say that rather than focusing on the provisions that were attached to this bill, that while I'll recommend a no vote on this, Representative Markwart, I look forward to working with you again on this, onto reaching an agreement on this and making sure we can get these funds out in a timely fashion. We do want to get this money out by the end of the fiscal year, which is just, just 11 days. And so that's what I'm gonna focus on. Again, for Republican members, I would recommend a, a no vote. I'll be voting yes as a gesture to try to sneak my way onto the conference committee. But again, for members going forward, I think it's important that it's a, all of us need to turn the volume down, focus on getting things done, and let's recognize that we've already achieved peak venom. We don't need to go back to where we were just two days ago. Thank you, Madam Speaker and members.
The member from Isanti, the minority leader, Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and members. If I could, I would like to ask Representative Franzen to yield for a question very quickly.
Representative Franzen, will you yield for a question? She will yield. Representative Douth.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Franzen, there, I think there was a little confusion as that amendment was getting offered, and I appreciate your bringing that forward and adding it to this bill. I believe that maybe you wanted to just make a, a comment about that.
Representative Franzen.
Uh, thank you, Representative Douth. Yes, so there was a little confusion because I thought it was the Franzen amendment, the one that I had offered a couple of weeks ago that just, we just didn't have, we didn't put the bill forward at that time. So the amendment that was actually offered, that Representative Pinto was kind enough to allow me to carry, was the one that Representative Pinto and Senator Benson had brokered. So there was a little confusion there. But aside from that issue, I just want to thank Representative Pinto for, for valuing my opinions on where I thought we needed to go with the Child Care Assistance Program, how I viewed the program, and valuing my input and, and looping me in after that, that agreement had been reached between him and, and the Senate. So, thank you.
Representative Douth.
Sounds good. Thank you, Representative Franzen, and thank you, Madam Speaker. So this bill, you know, obviously has some very important things in it. This is the bill that contains the money for local units of government so that they can use that to cover their costs in responding to their, their response to COVID and to this pandemic. Many of those counties have, counties and cities have already expended a great deal of money. This is a pretty important thing to get out to them as quickly as possible. They're basically using their reserves right now to, to cover their expenses and, and many of them obviously are seeing the same sort of reduction in, in revenues coming in that the state has seen because of the pandemic. So this is a really important bill. I, I do want to thank Representative Markwart. By all accounts, Representative Markwart and Representative Garofalo worked on this together with the Senate and, and, and kind of hammered out an agreement on how much money should be spent. And frankly, this was as much money as we could put out the door to local units of government as was allowed by the federal bill. And I think they deserve a lot of credit for working out that agreement. So thank you, Representative Markwart. Thank you, Representative Garofalo. The, the other, you know, we had a discussion about this bill on the floor a couple of days ago. We tried to bring it up. We heard that the majority party was gonna amend on parts of the governor's supplemental budget and, and send this, you know, back over to the Senate. Representative Markwart, in his comments, said, you know, the important part of this, something to this effect, I'm probably paraphrasing, but, you know, that it's important to get this $841 million out to local governments. Unfortunately, because of what Democrats have done by amending on things that weren't agreed to in this bill, that money's not gonna make it to local units of government. It might, but the odds of that are, are not looking good. The Senate has said they're gonna adjourn signing die today. If we pass this bill without the same language that the Senate passed, this doesn't go to the governor's desk. It goes back over to the Senate, and then it goes to conference committee. And all that has to happen today. They gotta hammer out an agreement on all these other provisions. And if the Senate's actually going to adjourn signing die today, there's a very low likelihood that this money makes it to local units of government. And I think when, when people watch at home what we do here at the legislature, this is the sort of thing that they can't figure out. This is the sort of thing that confuses them, that frustrates them. This was really simple. There was a bill with $841 million two days ago that sent money out as quickly as possible to local units of government so they could have those dollars that they need to pay for their response to COVID-19. Today, this bill has 15 other things in it and literally increases our deficit in the state. We already have a $2.5 billion deficit. I don't care what kind of creative math and how you want to try to convince people at home that you're transferring money from this fund or that fund. And I actually heard somebody on the House floor say that this, that this bill saves the state money. It's no damn wonder that people think that politicians are full of crap. I don't, I don't know what the actual spend, uh, well, I can tell you what it is. Sounds like it's 141 million. Because I heard that this bill transfers 148 million from this federal COVID dollars back to the general fund, and then there's a $7 million net positive in the bill. That would leave $141 million of, of cost that was put into this bill now. So we, we took a bill that was just $841 million of money going out to local units of government. It was federal money. It was just a pass-through, right? We, we should have done it a month ago, but we're doing it now, and, and that's good. Unfortunately, we've, we've, we've attached other things to it that make it unlikely that that money's actually gonna make it to local units of government. And what did we do? You know, it's, we're given bonuses to welfare recipients and other stuff that partisan stuff that we just couldn't, Democrats just couldn't resist, right? But to say that this bill saves the state money is laughable. This bill increases the deficit in this state by $141 million. There's, and, and, and I'm not gonna play, if you don't think that's the case, if somehow in your mind you've created this narrative that this bill does not do that, I could ask you to yield. And when we pass the $200 million of COVID money the first time or the second time, and all of you stood up on the floor and said, "Don't worry, this doesn't increase the deficit. This is gonna be paid for with the federal bill that's just about to pass in Washington, and once that bill passes, we're gonna transfer that money back to the general fund." So you already spent that money. You already spent that federal money. You don't get to stand up on the House floor and say that, you know, when you voted for that $200 million, you weren't increasing the deficit. And then stand up today when you're trying to spend that same money a second time and say, "I'm not increasing the deficit." The hell you aren't. You absolutely are. This bill increases the deficit in the state of Minnesota, and when you look at what you're doing it for, with no agreement, and, and adding that on to money that's really needed by local units of government, I gotta tell you, my counties and my cities are emailing me saying, "You gotta vote against this bill. This isn't the way you should be doing this. You're putting our money at risk." One of my counties that I checked with, Anoka County, $43.7 million is what they have either already spent or are projected to spend by the end of the year on COVID, on their response to COVID. And they're gonna have, I'm doing this from memory, $7.5 million of reduced revenue because of that? Because of the, the pandemic? People not paying in their property taxes? So they're paying for that and covering that out of the reserves. They need this money. And what are we doing? We're playing politics with it, adding stuff on that, that has nothing to do with this bill, that had nothing to do with the agreement in the underlying bill. And we're increasing the deficit. There's two issues I've had this entire session. One, the governor's emergency powers. And not necessarily that he had them or that he used them, but that this legislature never engaged in them. That when he would issue an executive order, we wouldn't have a hearing on it. We wouldn't bring in experts and, and do hearings to, to find out what data he used to make those decisions and whether that, whether we agreed with him and that was the right decision or not. We're still not doing that, and I still have a problem with that. And the other one is, we have a $2.5 billion deficit, and nobody cares! What do you think's gonna happen? Do you think magically $2.5 billion is gonna drop from the sky before the next budget? And if we don't deal with this right now, we have 12 months left of this biennium. That $2.5 billion deficit is a deficit in the current biennium. We have 12 months left. You make some reductions in spending now, you can realize 12 months' worth of those reductions and put that against the $2.5 billion. We wait until next session, and you'll have maybe one month, maybe two months, to try to realize savings? Good luck. You know that's not possible. And if we don't find savings in this biennium, any deficit we have carries over. we have carries over to the next. Do you know what the plan is right now? Because we did a revenue, you know, the Minnesota Management and Budget did a revenue forecast, a special one, an update in May, statutorily, that's all that was required, and the administration now can spend 100% of the reserves. I'm already starting to get the phone calls asking us, "Hey, you know, there's a fund over here that we could transfer a couple hundred million dollars into the general fund." You know why they want to do that? Because there's not enough money in the reserves to cover all of the deficit. And they don't intend to reduce enough spending. So what that tells you is, they're going to spend 100% of the reserves. And this legislature has done nothing to fix that problem. So for all the years that I worked in this chair and in that one up there, to be fiscally responsible and to put the reins on the governors and hold them back, to build up those reserves, they're gone. Kiss them goodbye. Is that your plan, to work on the deficit? Just going to take it all, 100% of it out of reserves? Drain the reserves down to zero. I can't tell you how irresponsible this stuff is. If you did this stuff in your budget, you'd go bankrupt. But for some reason, we don't feel like this is our money. Do you know what? Our voters at home think this is their money. And they're smart enough to know that when you're stupid with their money and you want to raise their taxes, they get mad, and they know exactly what you're doing. And instead of taking the $841 million that our local governments really need right now, we're playing politics and trying to get, you know, we're trying to get this other language into a conference committee on the 11th hour of a session when it's likely not to come out of conference committee. So you're doing one of two things. You're either killing this funding for local governments, and by the way, if that happens, the blood is 100% on Democrats' hands. This couldn't be clearer who's responsible for this. We've warned you, I brought a motion up yesterday, or day before yesterday, maybe it was yesterday, to bring this bill up in a clean format, vote on it, get the money right out the door, pass it in the same format it was in when it passed the Senate, so it would go right from here to the governor's desk? You rejected that. I found out that your members didn't know what the plan was. I asked the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee if, you know, because I had intercepted an email for Ways and Means members that said there were some amendments filed to put budget stuff on. Turns out, a lot of you, quite a few of you, learned here on the House floor that that was the plan. Some of you even made comments that, "Oh, no, this is just going to go to the committee for review. We're going to give it a thorough, you know, vetting, and then it's going to come back here to the floor and we're going to pass it out." What you didn't know is your leadership had different marching orders for you. They were, they were going to attach something else onto this bill, bring it back here. They were going to increase the deficit, put a bunch of controversial spending stuff in, and bind this thing up and make it much less likely that your, that your cities and counties actually get the money. Is that what you voted? I know, I know that's not what you thought was happening the other day. But I warned you, I stood right here at this microphone and warned you that's what was going on. Representative Carlson, you know, all but confirmed that when I, when I questioned him about it. And sure enough, you sent the bill to Ways and Means, had the hearing the next morning, yesterday morning, you amended on this language that has nothing to do with this bill. Now the bill doesn't match the Senate bill, and then now it doesn't go to the governor's desk. We're in, you know, by all accounts, the final day of a special legislative session, grasping at straws, trying to throw stuff into a bill and throw it over there and hope it sticks to the wall. So maybe that's what you're doing, right? Trying to get some language into conference committee, hope you can hammer out a last-minute agreement. Super-high-stakes poker. Or you're literally just killing the bill. That's an option. Maybe you want to kill the bill. Maybe the governor, you know, because what happens if we don't pass this language? The governor gets to spend the money. He's your party. Maybe that's what you want. I don't know. Maybe you want to kill this funding. Let the governor spend it. He's got a 10-day speed bump to go through the LAC process, but he could spend it just like we are. But thank you, Representative Markort, for representing our cities and our counties and our townships so well, because you, you gave them in this bill every penny that they could have gotten. And I don't think this bill could get better for our cities, counties, and townships. And I guarantee you, if the governor spends this money, it will not be this good, because I've already heard he wants to hold some of the money back for contingency. So when you voted the other day not to bring this bill up clean in that format and send it to the governor's desk, you voted against your opportunity to send the governor the bill that Representative Markort so capably negotiated to give as much money as possible, as much money was allowed by the federal bill, to get that right away into the hands of your local units of government. And today, we're rolling the dice. We have no idea if this money's going to make it to the hands of local units of government. You can stand here and you can say that. Yep, we hope they get the money. That's all you'll be doing, is hoping. You got no guarantee. You want to reconsider third reading, and we'll go back, we can peel off this stuff. Take us 15 minutes, probably. We could pass the bill in the same language as what was passed by the, by the Senate, and we could have this bill on the governor's desk in two hours. He could be signing this thing by early afternoon. And this money could go out the door to local units of government. In our bill, this money would go out by June 30th, if it passes, if it gets signed. It's almost impossible to say that if this bill does not pass, that those units of government would get their money by June 30th. They most likely now would not. The governor would have to take action right now to start the LAC process, to get the money, to even get it approved by June 30th, and that certainly wouldn't get the money out the door. So, I don't know. I don't know how we resolve this. I tried to warn you the other day. Tried to put the, tap the brakes. I warned you before you even knew what was happening. And I apologize about breaking the news here on the House floor to all the majority members that didn't know what was going on. Those little tricks are what you learn when you're around here a few years, and you start to pick up the signs. But we had an agreement on this bill. The four people who negotiated agreed that this is what should happen and that that money should go out to local units of government. And they did a really good job. Not about partisan politics. I'm standing here thanking a Democrat for his work on this, because he did the right thing. But, but his bill got hijacked and curtailed by leadership who decided, rather than just bring the governor's budget to the floor in a separate bill for debate, which they didn't, we haven't seen it here, we're going to amend it on to this, which is so important, and roll the dice that maybe this stuff happens. Your best-case scenario is, right now, you go to conference committee and they actually hold a conference committee. There is no guarantee they get to agreement. So Democrats, you have successfully put $841 million worth of federal money to our local units of government, very needed money. You have successfully put that in danger. I would say it's probably likely not to happen today. And I'm sorry to be the, two days ago, I was the bearer of bad news for Democrats who thought they were doing a noble thing and getting money out the door. I'm sorry that I was the bearer of bad news that your bill was getting caught up in a political game. And today, I'm sorry for local units of government that I'm going to be the bearer of bad news that you're likely not going to get this money. And if you don't get it from this legislature, it's almost certain that you won't get this much. Seems really easy for the legislature to just work together, do our job, pass a bill. But somehow, it always gets complicated, because somebody thought it would be easier, rather than bring the governor's budget to the House floor and debate it, debate it on its merits and pass it out of here. You have the votes. You have the votes to pass the governor's supplemental budget. Now, I don't agree with that, because we have a $2.5 billion deficit, and the governor's budget increases the deficit by $150 million. And I think that's irresponsible. I think a lot of what the governor does is probably irresponsible. I think Minnesotans agree with me on that. They can't operate their budgets that way. But why didn't you do your job? We have a single-subject rule in our, in our Minnesota Constitution. Every bill that passes out of here needs to be a single subject, and that subject needs to be defined in the title of the bill. I won't read the title of this bill. I'm, there's so many bills that have gone out of here with titles that have nothing to do with the language that's in them, which is unconstitutional. I'm certain this one probably doesn't talk about all of the things. But that's what we're doing. The majority party has spoken. We're going to muddy the waters, put this money at risk, play political games, and kill this bill. And that's the likely outcome of what's going to happen today. I'm going to make one final plea. It's 10:23. We've got a few hours today. In a few minutes, we could fix this bill. I'll ask the bill author to stand up when I'm done. I'm not going to do it, because it'll be seen as some political game. This is your bill. You've got the votes to pass it if you want. It's rightfully before the body. You've amended it with your votes. I won't say you did the right thing. I think it's pretty obvious to me and everybody watching at home that you did the wrong thing on this bill. But I'm going to ask you, Representative Markort, stand up. In your final speech, you're going to be the last one with the final word on this bill. Stand up and make a motion to reconsider third reading. Let's go back and let's offer amendments to peel this stuff out, and let's put this bill in the same format it was in when it came out of the Senate, the way that it was agreed to, and let's send it to the governor's desk so it can be there this afternoon for a signature. And let's get this money out the door to local units of government. This is your final opportunity to correct your wrong. So that's the plea that I'm going to make. And Representative Winkler is preparing his props over there, I see, so I assume he might be speaking too. I, maybe I'm not the, when I stood up, it was just going to be one, but maybe now it's going to be two speakers. So I'll look forward to, to you enlightening us. But when you're enlightening us, I want you to remember, when you say things like, "This actually saves the state of Minnesota money," you sound like a damn fool.
Representative Dowd. Custom and usage, just try to avoid personalities.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
I think everybody knows the custom and usage, and everybody can stay within the bounds. Especially, the former speaker knows. He has noted and avoided ruling on this point of order several times. Representative Dowd.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do know the rules of the body, and I purposefully bump up against them frequently. So I use the same liberty that many members in this chamber do. But the reality is, because our rules say that you're not supposed to say that, doesn't make it any less true. And I think everybody in this chamber and everybody at home watching knows exactly what Democrats did with this bill, and they know exactly the danger that you put the $841 million in. So let's be honest with Minnesotans. Let's tell them, yes, this bill has some spending. If you want to defend that spending, defend it. Defend that it's necessary, but be honest with yourselves that it increases the deficit by $141 million. Be honest with yourselves, and be honest with people at home, because it does. And the reason I know that it does is because you've already spent the money that you've transferred back, that you're transferring back in this bill. We spent it when we passed the $200 million COVID relief money on the House floor that was general fund spending, and everybody said, "Well, this isn't going to hit the general fund, because the federal money's going to cover it, and we're going to transfer that money back." That's how we know. You already spent that money. You don't get to spend it again today. This bill increases the deficit, and while it has needed money for local units of government, and I wish that I could tell members to support this bill today, I cannot. I cannot because of the process. I cannot because you're using it for ideological purposes to give welfare bonuses to welfare recipients, and, and other things in this bill. You want to talk about those things? Bring them to the House floor. Bring them in their own bill. Let's have a debate. So I'm going to ask members not to vote for this bill today, but I'm going to renew my plea to the, to the author of this bill. Let's consider second reading. Let's unwind this bill. Let's put it in the format it came out of the Senate. Let's send it to the governor's desk. Let's get it signed today so these local units of government can have their money. That's the right thing to do, and this body needs to start doing the right thing. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The member from Wabashaw, Representative Driskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, members. Thank you, Chair Markort, for your work on this bill. Thank you, Representative Garofalo, for your work on this bill. And I know I've talked to Representative Garofalo about this. He's been tuned in well, and, and obviously the chair has shepherded at least the core part of this bill, the CARES Act funding, which I think was supposed to be the subject of the bill when this started, and certainly what probably everybody in the body, almost everybody, if not everyone, would support. The CARES Act funding that is the $841 million that Chair Markort talks about. But we've got a different bill before us. We have an unconstitutional bill before us today, members, probably the most egregious violation of the single-subject clause of the Minnesota Constitution that I've seen since I've been a member here. And I saw one other one. I see the majority leader smiling. He's got, yeah, he's got another one. And Representative Winkler, there was another one, too, that I asked Representative Carlson about on the floor probably eight years ago. And, but this one is very egregious. And members, if you look at it, so if you go back to the Minnesota Constitution, Article 4, Section 17, says, "Laws to embrace only one subject. No law shall embrace more than one subject which shall be expressed in its title." Now, members, let's read the title. "A Bill for an Act Related to State Government Finance." Sounds like a single, single subject. "A Bill for an Act Related to State Government Finance." But, whoa, there's a semicolon. "Providing Aid and Reimbursement to Counties, Cities, and Towns to Fund Expenses Related to COVID-19." Sounds like a single subject. But, whoa, there's another semicolon. "Establishing a Supplemental Budget." Might be a single subject. Another semicolon. "Appropriating Money From the Coronavirus-Leaved Federal Fund, Making Various Changes and Cancellations to Support State Government Activities." Sounds like a single subject in its own. And then there's another semicolon. "Establishing an Administrative Citation Process." Now, Madam Speaker, that sounds like a single subject. "Establishing an Administrative Citation Process." That would be a nice bill, Representative Markort, if it was by itself. "Authorizing Temporary Rate Increases." That's for the daycare welfare increases in the bill, I think. That alone should sound like a single subject. I haven't been counting them here. And then a semicolon. "Making Additions and Deletions to Certain State Parks." Members, Madam Speaker, that sounds like a single subject. "Making additions and deletions to certain state parks." That should be a bill, if that's what we want to do. And then a semicolon. "Authorizing the Sale of Surplus Lands." I think you could argue that that would be, by itself, a single subject. Be a nice bill, if it was by itself. But no, it's rolled into this big omnibus bill. Amending Minnesota Statutes 2018, Section 84.63. Sounds like a single subject. A semicolon. Section 92.502, amending that one. And then amending 119B.125. And then, members, there's a bunch more that are listed. Every single one of them would be, would be a single Every single one of them would be a single-subject. But no, we've got legislation in here about chronic wasting disease. We've got legislation about aquatic invasive species. We have information in here or legislation affecting public lands. We have the daycare assistance money. By the way, the same daycare assistance fund that's somewhere between $7 and $100 million in fraud, according to the latest legislative auditor report. The CARES money for the counties and cities, $841 million that we're talking about, the $841 million that passed the Senate nearly unanimously. Sounds like that could be a single-subject if it was by itself. There's police funding in the bill. Members, Madam Speaker, that could be a single-subject. But how is police related to CWD? How is police funding related to lands purchases and sales? How is police funding related to subsidizing daycare expenses of Minnesotans? It's not. Because it's a different subject. There's information or legislation in here on veterans' funding, PCA legal costs, and Members, these are not the same subject. They're all individual, single-subjects, rolled together because it's efficient and easy for this body to do, and it was a mistake. And it's pointed out by some earlier speakers that this was done for expediency. Just legislative expediency. Add more on to the bill so we can accomplish more of our agenda. And in the meantime, we run over and destroy the Constitution of our great state. Madam Speaker, with the author of the bill, yield.
He will yield. Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Representative Markwart, what would you say is a single-subject to this bill?
Representative Markwart.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and Representative Druskowski. As I think I explained on the outset, it is providing relief for not only the services provided, but also for people and agencies impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And I will say also, when we're talking about single-subject, that I've been around for 20 years in this body, and there's been a number of bills, supplemental budget bills, especially in the last year of a two-year biennium, where there is all sorts of things put into a bill, and, you know, we'd have to let the courts decide on something like that. But it's worked both sides of the aisle, where you've had bills with probably items that may not look like they relate exactly to one another.
Representative Druskowski.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Representative Markwart. Well, I don't know. I heard what you called the single-subject to the bill. I don't know how that relates to chronic wasting disease. I don't know how it relates to aquatic invasive species. I don't know how it relates to land purchases and sales. Representative Markwart, it does not. It doesn't relate to any of those at all. You could make an argument that, you know, what you described is a single-subject, which is not what's reflected in the bill, in the title of the bill. What you use as a single-subject is not what's here. What we have as a single-subject has to be reflected in the title of the bill, and what you suggested is not. And that's what I've heard in the past from Representative Carlson, when I asked him eight years ago, or so, as chair of the then Ways and Means Committee, what was a single-subject? It was a similar response. It was a response construed on the floor in order to try to piece things together. But the reality is, it's not in the bill. What you described is not in the bill. What he described then was not in the bill. What the title of the bill says is we've got this single-subject, plus this single-subject, plus this single-subject. What your intent was does not relate to many of the things in the bill, and this is a product that we have. And, Madam Speaker, I know that you and Representative Barr and others, and I, and I think a lot of growing number of members, abhor this type of what we have in front of us. And the courts have essentially said, you know, "We want to let the legislature sort that out for themselves." Well, I want to see the courts come out and say, "You know what? This is not a single-subject. It's very clear." So again, thank you, Representative Markwart. Again, I think a very good process on the substance of this bill, the single-subject of the CARES Act funding, which I think has been talked about greatly. I think you've done a great job on that. To haphazardly, at the end, just throw all this mishmash in here has created an unconstitutional bill that this member cannot support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
The majority leader, the member from Hennepin, Representative Winkler.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I've just been sitting here reflecting on the reason why personalities are not allowed in debate is probably because we would spend all our time arguing about who is more hypocritical in the way that we conduct ourselves in passing legislation. And that might be fun for us, but would get tedious to the 17 people who are watching. Madam Speaker, members, this was a good bill as passed by the Senate. It was not a perfect bill, and members on our side certainly had some disagreements with provisions in it. It went to the Committee on Ways and Means. The committee amended it and improved it considerably, providing resources to help people in our districts and around the state deal with pandemics, to deal with childcare crises that preexisted the pandemic. We are obviously coming out of a period of civil unrest that creates great needs in many communities in our state. And so we are providing resources that the federal government has given to us to help Minnesotans get through crises. We have made the bill better. The House has taken its action on a Senate file to improve it considerably. We are sending it back to the Senate. They have the option... They have two options, or three. The first option is to concur with the amendments to the Senate file. They could just agree that this is a better bill and pass it, and it could go to the governor today. That's one option. They could disagree that it's better and send it to conference, and then they would have to stay here past Friday and continue to negotiate on the work that's in front of us, the critical work that they have been wanting to leave and avoid. Or they cannot provide money to local governments. So they have a few options. The first one is the best. We can get this bill to the governor today, sign it into law, and provide much-needed help for Minnesotans. And, members, I would encourage a yes vote.
The member from Clay, the author of the bill, Representative Markwart.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and members, and thank you so much for the discussion on the bill. And I would like to thank, again, Senator Chair Rosen and Senator Dietzick, Representative Garofalo, who was a great resource on this bill, and all the local government groups that also had a lot of impact on big portions of this bill. I appreciate that very much. And, members, I, you know, I know there's concerns with the process here, but I want to emphasize and be very clear that the agreement on the $841 million part of this bill is intact. If you go onto the website, you look at your runs on counties, cities, townships, it hasn't changed one dime. That's all intact. Language is all intact. And kind of one thing to remember is that agreements do not relate into law. Agreements need to be also part of a deal. And when things become part of a deal or get into law, it takes the Senate, it takes the House, and it takes the governor to sign the bill into law. So, you know, over the years, many times, portions of a bill that have been agreed on move into a larger bill, an omnibus supplement funding bill, that becomes part of that. And the people from the House and the Senate who might have negotiated that part of the bill when I was Education Chair, Senator Uyghur and I negotiated part that went into a larger bill. We may or may not have agreed with the rest of the bill, but that part of the agreement was part of the larger bill. That's the same thing with this bill. Also on the budget, and, you know, the House research, you know, I'm looking at the spreadsheet here, and there is a $7 million savings to the general fund. Those are the facts. You can characterize that any way you want, but the facts are a $7 million savings to the general fund. And what we're doing here is we are transferring $148 million that is COVID-19-related expenses. That's what that CARES Act of the federal government wanted us to use those dollars for. They gave the state of Minnesota $2.2 billion to use that funding. $841 plus the 317 plus another 30 is going to local governments. The rest can be used to the state for COVID-19 expenses. That's what we're doing. We're taking some funds that we had used for COVID-19, putting them into this fund, the very same CARES funding fund that the $841 million for local governments is coming from. That's the $2.2 billion that we, as taxpayers, have all paid for. So the bottom line is Senate File 47 saved $7 million on the general fund. So, members, we have a chance here with this bill to really make a difference. To really make a difference for those people who are providing services for the COVID-19, and that is to our local governments, and those that are impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. There is no doubt that this bill will make our communities better, stronger, healthier, and safer. And so, members, there isn't anything in this bill that you should not be able to support. And hopefully, the Senate, when this bill goes over to them, will look at this. And what we can do today with this bill is send a very clear message to these folks that we have your backs. We know the struggles that you have gone through with the COVID-19 pandemic. We can tell our nurses who are on the front lines, "We have your backs." We can tell law enforcement through these resources in this bill that we've got your back. Our first responders, our firefighters, "We have your backs." Our personal care attendants, who throw their hearts in for free when they're working with our most vulnerable, they've been on the front lines. They're part of our communities that make our community strong. Let's tell them that we have their backs. Our childcare providers, our veterans who have put their lives on the line for us, "We've got your back because we know you, like everyone else, is struggling in the COVID-19 pandemic." Our childcare providers, our small businesses around the state, this bill is going to provide significant help for those folks. Young families, all the way to senior citizens. Members, we can send a clear message that we realize, when we're talking about our local communities back home, we're talking about everyone. We're talking about those who provide the important services, but we also know those who are impacted, that contribute to your communities, that create the social fabric and strength of these communities also need assistance right now. So these are the communities that make our community strong. This bill will allow these people to help make our communities thrive. I am hoping that we approve this bill, send it over to the Senate. And, members, there's no constitutional deadline where we have to adjourn today. I looked through the Constitution, I looked through the House rules, I even looked through the joint Senate and House rules, and nowhere in there is there a constitutional deadline to end the special session. But the Senate has unilaterally decided they're done today. If they really want to pass this bill, if they really care about our nurses and our law enforcement, and our first responders, and our veterans, childcare providers, personal care attendants, small businesses, they will not adjourn today. If they don't agree with this, let's work it out and get something done. There's no constitutional requirement to adjourn today. So I'm confident we can get this done. We need to get these dollars out to our local governments today. They're waiting. We also have to get money out to everyone in our communities who make our community strong. Members, I ask for your support on Senate File 47.
The clerk will take the roll on Senate File 47.
Akam.
Akam, aye.
Akam, aye. Albright. Albright, no. Anderson.
Anderson, no.
Anderson, no. Becker.
Becker, no.
Becker, no. Bonner.
Bonner, aye.
Bonner, aye. Barr.
Barr, no.
Barr, no. Baker.
Baker, no.
Baker, no. Becker-Finn. Becker-Finn, aye. Bennett, excused. Bernardi.
Bernardi, aye.
Bernardi, aye. Bierman.
Bierman, aye.
Bierman, aye. Bo.
Bo, no.
Bo, no. Brand.
Brand votes yes.
Brand, aye. Cantrell.
Cantrell, aye.
Cantrell, aye. Carlson, a.
Carlson, aye, aye.
Carlson, aye, aye. Carlson, L.
Carlson, L, aye.
Carlson, L, aye. Christensen.
Christensen, aye.
Christensen, aye. Claflin.
Claflin, aye.
Claflin, aye. Daniels.
Daniels, no.
Daniels, no. Dowd. Dowd, no. Davids.
Davids, no.
Davids, no. Dafne. Dafne, aye. Dean.
Dean, aye.
Dean, aye. Damuth. Damuth, no. Detmer.
Detmer, no.
Detmer, no. Druskowski. Druskowski, no. Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Eklund, aye. Edelson.
Edelson, aye.
Edelson, aye. Elkins.
Elkins, aye.
Elkins, aye. Erickson.
Erickson, no.
Erickson, no. Fabian. Fabian, no. Fisher.
Fisher, aye.
Fisher, aye. Franzen.
Franzen, no.
Franzen, no. Freiberg.
Freiberg, aye.
Freiberg, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, pass.
Garofalo, pass. Gomez, aye. Green.
Green, no.
Green, no. Gressel.
Gressel, no.
Gressel, no. Grunhagen.
Grunhagen, no.
Grunhagen, no. Haley.
Haley, no.
Haley, no. Halverson. Halverson, aye. Hamilton.
Hamilton, no.
Hamilton, no. Hanson.
Hanson, aye.
Hanson, aye. Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Hassan, aye. Hausmann.
Hausmann, aye.
Hausmann, aye. Heinrich.
Heinrich, no.
Heinrich, no. Heinzmann.
Heinzmann, no.
Heinzmann, no. Herr. Herr, aye. Hurtas.
Hurtas, no.
Hurtas, no. Hornstein.
Hornstein, aye.
Hornstein, aye. Howard.
Howard, aye.
Howard, aye. Hewitt.
Hewitt, aye.
Hewitt, aye. Johnson. Johnson, no. Jordan.
Jordan, aye.
Jordan, aye. Jurgens.
Jurgens, no.
Jurgens, no. Keel.
Keel, no.
Keel, no. Cleavorn.
Cleavorn, aye.
Cleavorn, aye. Cagle.
Cagle, aye.
Cagle, aye. Katisa Whitoun.
Katisa Whitoun, aye.
Katisa Whitoun, aye. Koznick.
Koznick, no.
Koznick, no. Kresch.
Kresch, no.
Kresch, no. Kunisch-Pourdein.
Kunisch-Pourdein, aye.
Kunisch-Pourdein, aye. Lehman.
Lehman, no.
Lehman, no. Lee. Lee, aye. Lesch.
Lesch, aye.
Lesch, aye. Liebling.
Liebling, aye.
Liebling, aye. Lean. Lean.
Lean, aye.
Lean, aye. Lilly.
Lilly, aye.
Lilly, aye. Lippert.
Lippert, aye.
Lippert, aye. Listlegard. Listlegard, aye. Long. Long, aye. Lucero.
Lucero, no.
Lucero, no. Luick. Luick, no. Mahoney. Mahoney, aye. Mann.
Mann, aye.
Mann, aye. Mariani.
Mariani, aye.
Mariani, aye. Markwart. Markwart, aye. Mason.
Mason, pass.
Mason, pass. McDonald.
McDonald, no.
McDonald, no. Mecklen.
Mecklen, no.
Mecklen, no. Miller.
Miller, aye.
Miller, aye. Moller.
Moller, aye.
Moller, aye. Moran.
Moran, aye.
Moran, aye. Morrison.
Morrison, aye.
Morrison, aye. Munson.
Munson, no.
Munson, no. Murphy.
Murphy, aye.
Murphy, aye. Nash, excused. Nelson M.
Nelson M, aye.
Nelson M, aye. Nelson N.
Nelson N, no.
Nelson N, no. New. New, no. Nor. Nor, aye. Nornis.
Nornis, no.
Nornis, no. Navatney.
Navatney, no.
Navatney, no. O'Driscoll.
O'Driscoll, no.
O'Driscoll, no. Olson. Olson, aye. O'Neal.
O'Neal, no.
O'Neal, no. Palowski.
Palowski, aye.
Palowski, aye. Purcell.
Purcell, aye.
Purcell, aye. Petersburg.
Petersburg, no.
Petersburg, no. Pearson.
Pearson, no.
Pearson, no. Pinto.
Pinto, aye.
Pinto, aye. Poppy.
Poppy, aye.
Poppy, aye. Poston.
Poston, no.
Poston, no. Pryor.
Pryor, aye.
Pryor, aye. Quam.
Quam, no.
Quam, no. Richardson.
Richardson, aye.
Richardson, aye. Robbins.
Robbins, aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Robbins, no.
Robbins, no. Runbeck.
Runbeck, no.
Runbeck, no. Sandell.
Sandell, aye.
Sandell, aye. Sandstedt.
Sandstedt, aye.
Sandstedt, aye. Salk.
Salk, aye.
Salk, aye. Schumacher.
Schumacher, no.
Schumacher, no. Schultz. Schultz, aye. Scott.
Scott, no.
Scott, no. Stevenson.
Stevenson, aye.
Stevenson, aye. Sundin.
Sundin, aye.
Sundin, aye. Swazinski.
Swazinski, no.
Swazinski, no. Tabkey.
Tabkey, aye.
Tabkey, aye. Tice.
Tice, aye.
Tice, aye. Torkelson.
Torkelson, no.
Torkelson.
I'm sorry. Torkelson, no.
Torkelson, no. Erdal.
Erdal, no.
Erdal, no. Vang.
Vang, aye.
Vang, aye. Vogel.
Vogel, no.
Vogel, no. Wagenius.
Wagenius, aye.
Wagenius, aye. Waslowick.
Waslowick, aye.
Waslowick, aye. West.
West, no.
West, no. Winkler. Winkler, aye. Wogomat.
Wogomat, aye.
Wogomat, aye. Jong-Jae, aye. Jong-T.
Jong-T, aye.
Jong-T, aye. Yuakim.
Yuakim, aye.
Yuakim, aye. Speaker Hartman. Speaker Hartman, aye. Considine.
Yes.
Considine, aye. Garofalo.
Garofalo, aye.
Garofalo, aye.